So it being six oh one on September seventeenth, we'll call this meeting to order. This meeting is being audio recorded remotely on Zoom and live streamed on RCTV. The Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It's the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment and ensuing discussion. Do we have any public comment? Oh, I see Rich. Yeah.
Yeah, I want to respond to Rebecca Lieberman who sent an email and.
Yeah, we'll start our meeting too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We start the cab meeting, sorry. And then I also have a comment up. Please go ahead, but I also have a comment after that.
All right. Okay. And, and so number one, I want to acknowledge that she sent in the comment. The question was, what would be the additional cost in rate if we went from fifty-five percent renewable energy or non-carbon to seventy-five percent? So I want to acknowledge that question. It's not an easy one to answer retrospectively because it, it's been a while since we looked at it. But I do want to state that that's what the, our RMLD is looking at right now. They met with staff and are looking at various costs and impacts of different rate, non-carbon percentages above fifty-five percent. And their recommendations will come to us in early next year and we'll have a recommendation going forward. So, don't have short answer to her question, but it is something that we're looking at right now. And the recommendation will be coming out when we set rates in this, in the spring.
And just to add to that, we, we do look at that annually.
Annually, right. I want to acknowledge your comment.
Thanks.
Okay. So actually I have two comments. One is we have a quorum. We have three members today. But Charlie Protopapas, who's our fourth member, he couldn't attend. His mother has passed away recently and the cab expresses their condolences to Charlie and his family. So I just want that recorded.
Thank you.
And in the same way, Vindra Gochi, who's here from ENE, his father passed away last month and our condolences to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Liaisons, I don't think we have the liaison from the blackboard on, but do you have any?
Yeah, I do have. Yeah, I do have a couple of comments about things that I do when I'm not, I'm just doing our MLD stuff. So the Killam School project that is under design and construction, they will not be adding a emergency power generator to their, their site. It's not going to be a shelter scenario, so they don't need to have a generator. That's going to save the town of Reading five hundred thousand dollars in, in not having that. So they will be reliant on battery and, and power that would, would come in support of that project. Recal, which is the other project across the street, the senior center, they are looking at roof solar and ground source heat pump. And they are struggling with higher prices of solar and have been asking, you know, what additional things might we provide? I've been referred to Mark Doctor to follow up on that and we'll include Megan and IRD on discussions with Recal and their solar efforts and, and what we might do either in front of the meter or behind the meter. Rooftop solar is always easier to install than other solar options. So we'll see what, how we can make that happen. And another topic, the town charter was approved by the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, as they like to say. The, the chapter that affects us was unchanged. We abstained from that recommendation, but it is, has been approved by the Select Board and will go before town meeting as a part of the warrant. Yeah, that's, that's the highlights.
Thank you.
And on the general manager search, we are at the stage where we are actually interviewing candidates. We've had some excellent interviews and we continue on in, in that process at, at the moment.
So in terms of scheduling, do we have an estimated timeframe of when we might do interviews in front of the board?
Not, not at this time. Not, not at this time. I mean, I, I, our, our goal is to have that in some point in November, by, by November, if not earlier. You know, it is, it is almost October. So you know, I, that, that is our goal.
And we know about both contracts.
Like I've been telling everybody, January four.
If, yeah.
Twenty twenty-seven, correct.
If we're able to move faster, obviously we want to be able to do that.
Speed is our game. We are meeting almost, we met Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and last week we met multiple days, anticipation, several more days next week. So we are working curiously towards getting candidates.
Thank you for that.
And I do want to add, one of the things that we did is in preparation for that is meet with various RMLD staff groups. The three of us divided our time and talked to different groups and we consolidated the feedback from, from the staff here. What their strengths, what, what would they like to see in a leader? And I want to recognize that because it has been very much a part of our thinking and discussion as we've talked about and talked to the candidates. Some of the candidates have asked, what's, what things are you looking in a leader? And we repeated that back to them as far as what we're looking for. So want to acknowledge that that feedback has been useful and guiding us in, in that effort.
Contract committee.
Rich on.
Rich, Rich is on. Rich, do you want to share any updates from the contract committee?
Yeah, thanks. As long as, assuming everybody can hear me, I'm off mute. So assuming you can hear me. Yes, we have met one time and I, our committee meeting or our committee is myself as the Chair, Dave Talbot and Vivek, I think, is our total committee. So we are progressing. We will probably have another meeting here in the next one to two weeks to continue to move forward on the contract drafting.
All right. Why don't we move forward into approval of meeting minutes?
Okay, so on the meeting minutes, I was asked to provide my language. I'd shared that language as I recall from July twenty-third. Paul had some feedback on that. And I think we've exchanged some emails on it, but I think Paul would like to just have us reflect on what we heard. And he had some commentary on it so that I, I think it's before we, you know, decide on the, so I don't think we're going to approve any minutes here today, right? Erica, is that correct?
So either you can agree on the verbiage and approve them with the condition that I'll update the verbiage or we can approve the next time. It's your call.
Okay, fine. So, so let's, let's try to get the stuff done.
Do you want to see I need to pull the minutes or the email up?
Pull up the email because the minutes is a lot of stuff.
I'm gonna go, Rebecca, I'm gonna start with your suggested language in red here.
Erica, is that in on the table here, this email?
No, that's on, that's on the screen.
Thank you.
Hundred and oh, okay.
Yeah. So, so the main thing was that the auditors said you don't want to pay down your pension and OPEB liabilities faster than the town of Reading. Okay. So I, I wanted that recorded so that at least that's a guiding framework for the commissioners and the cabinet. You know, there was a lot of discussion, but I, I wanted to have a takeaway. And so clearly because, because there's the risk that, you know, there's co-mingling of funds. And what Paul has highlighted is that, that's true for pension, but OPEB is different and OPEB, there's no co-mingling. Is that correct?
Correct. So the, because the pensions come from the town, our money gets co-mingled with them. But the OPEB, there was legislation that was passed good, good number of years ago that allows a light plant to establish their own fund, which is kept separate from the town's money. So that those dollars are not co-mingled. So, you know, depending on finances at any given point, you know, whatever the board decides it wants to do, if they want to pay down the, and it can change with the stock and all that kind of stuff. It's not. But anyway, you can, the board can elect to contribute at a faster rate to the OPEB and not worry about those dollars getting co-mingled with the towns.
So, so the, the pension liability is greater, right? The pension is a greater liability than the OPEB liability. But I, I think it makes sense to track the, the Reading level of payments so that we stick with that for pension and do the OPEB at the rate that we think it's financially responsible. I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Paul, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah. So I'm looking at the, at the meeting minutes and it talks about the pension liability having decreased by two million due to favorable investment returns is what I just said, right? Market goes up, we ride that wave. If it goes down, it could change.
I look at the absolute number. I want to just look at what is the absolute liability for pension, absolute liability for OPEB. But my sense is pension is a bigger number.
I, I don't know that that's the case. I see that the liability increase, I, I don't see a number that describes.
Yeah, because the audit report had all those numbers. The audit report had all the numbers. But so, so the main, at least in terms of the minutes, the language that I think I would recommend to be put in is the takeaway is keep the pension paid down at the same rate as the town of Reading. And for OPEB, can make a financial decision based on the financials that year.
I think that pretty well sums up what you just said, pretty well sums up the email exchange.
So are the two of you in alignment with this change?
We're in alignment with what I had in, Erica, could you, I think the email exchange is above that?
This is you and then Vivek's is above.
And then Vivek responds above that saying.
Okay.
You want to see my email again?
But I thought, I thought you agreed to the, the statement I made right now, right?
I reached with what you just said, correct.
So, so let's go. So she'll just incorporate that in the minutes and then we're done.
So basically the red, I'll change to say basically the takeaway was to keep the pension rate the same and the OPEB will be based on a financial decision.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, it says pension. It says pay down their, our redemption. Oh, not pay down. Okay, yeah.
Fascinating. It's like the, the point is going to be split, a separate point around pension.
Yes.
Yep.
So with those changes, plan to be reflected. Would you like to?
Okay.
Moved that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approved the following twenty twenty-five open session minutes meeting.
As discussed.
As discussed on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Anyone want to read the motion for?
Moved here, the Board of Commissioners approved the following twenty twenty-five open session meeting minutes as amended on the recommendation of the interim general manager and the board secretary.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Or, oh, sorry, we're gonna have to do a roll call. I'm sorry, Rich, I forgot about you. So we do a quick roll call though.
Swanson, yes.
How did I? But Walter, right?
Yes, thanks. Five zero. Okay. So last time we met, we had the team from ENE join us. We did not make it through all of the content. So we've allocated another kind of short time period for the remaining content. And so I appreciate the two of you joining us again to, to cover that content. I know we wanted to ensure that as we work through this content, we have an understanding of, you know, where are we talking about kind of general services available versus where is RMLD currently taking services? And I know the team is interested in just kind of understanding what those options are and costs associated. So kind of focus on that as we go through the project. That'd be great.
Yeah. So I can, I, you guys have.
So now I, I, I put it right to win. And I don't know, he talked to you about it, but at least the cab would like to understand where is the money being spent on ENE services? What, what are the things that we are spending on? And Erica can pull that up if necessary. And since we're going to go into budgeting, what are the services that we're going to need going forward? So help us, you have twenty minutes. Help us look at all of this information. So then, thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll do what I can. So thank you for having us back. Noel Chambers, Director of Energy Efficiency and Electrification at Energy New England. We'll sort of step this.
Technical difficulty. They get an extra minute.
They're on the clock.
Do you guys have the presentation on your?
We do.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes it doesn't like share.
So, yeah. So my team is a fairly small team. I've got Crin Tasso as our operations manager. So generally speaking, that means she has broad responsibility of our residential and commercial programs for things like home energy assessments, commercial assessments, both of those rebate programs, so the resident commercial rebate programs, as well as the solar programs. Caitlin Leahy Barb comes out of organizations that have historically supported commercial and industrial programs under MassSave and the IOUs and runs our EV group. So the transportation electrification team. And then we have a number of other staff members. So we have five home energy assessors. Three of them are full-time, two of them are part-time. We have one customer service representative who takes, does all the, the phone calls and scheduling for about two thousand assessments a year. We've got one full-time and one part-time employee to do rebate processing. We've got one marketing staff and three part-time EV staff members.
Is it okay if we ask questions during the, just quickly?
Yeah, sure.
We're not using this, this program that you just described, right?
Yeah. So the home energy assessment program, I believe you discussed and approved a, a bid with Abode. And I think just to clear up maybe a misunderstanding about that bid, ENE did receive a copy of it. The way the language in the bid was structured, there's effectively one company in the state that could fulfill the entirety of that scope as a single entity. You awarded that contract to that organization. There's one other company that could probably do it as well. They, sounds like they did not bid. I didn't see a response on the website. We don't have a number of those things on staff. In fact, many of, nine of the communities that we do home energy assessments with, we also work in concert with Abode for them to do the heat pump and weatherization consultative services.
I wasn't asking you to get into like the, the, whatever's going on with procurement. That's not what this is about is what I would just like to see is let's focus on the things that RMLD is using. What are we doing with you? What are we spending? What are we getting? That's what I would hope to get out of this. Okay. Moving quickly through the general stuff.
No, no, I guess that's an excellent point because the clarification of it is, yeah. But one of the, why, why didn't we go on that route? We're already using, we already have you as a service provider. Here, we already have you on a contract, but that would be an additional contract? Or was that one of the services you provided already for a deputy paid for service?
We, we, it had been a bid for home energy assessment, home energy assessments. There was a bid that you guys put out every three years for, and we had won it the previous two cycles. And the, the way that you, I think, were looking to, to do your program was to change it, make it a weatherization and heat pump consultative program rolled in with the home energy assessment to really promote that aspect for your community members, as I understood what the bid was written as. And you, you moved away from that.
There's, well, we're under an eighty-six thousand dollar three-year contract with ENE right now, I think, right? I just, just looking from the AP warrant that there's a twenty-four hundred dollar charge every month and it says it's on a three-year contract through twenty twenty-seven. So what is that for?
That is for what ends up being, that is your, your tier one, your required spend as an owner. So that's for staffing for the CFR or CSR for our, why am I blanking on it? CRM, the, all the other sort of office style aspects of keeping the, the lights in the building staffed.
Can, can, can you actually get back to us with a breakdown as to what are we getting? I mean, Paul, maybe you guys already have this, but I think it's helpful for us because before we go into the next budget cycle, we should be very clear about this.
So Vivek, there, there's a service agreement that between ENE and, and RMLD that lists every single service that's provided for the monthly fee in that. And then, you know, we're also available if, if you want to have.
See, my, my bad. Like, you know, I, 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 I go by whatever meeting documents we get and I prepare based on that. And, you know, we, we look at stuff. So this is information that's not, I mean, if we scan all the documents that are available, maybe we can find it, but I, 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 I think it'll be helpful, Paul, if you can provide this to us. Because it's.
So I think the service agreement spells it out line by line. You know, everything, including the power supply, the reviews, the, the power purchases, all of that. The, the other thing that I was going to say we're available is as you go into budgeting, if you find it helpful that our staff might, you know, help in, there are other services. I, I watched the, the, the film of the last meeting and I know John had said, you know, we do shared services. If there are other things, and I know Noel has an example in his group where savings can be achieved, it's really a decision up to you. Just like every MLP decides to buy X percent of a project or not to buy in a project. You have the ability to select these services à la carte, especially if there's a savings that, that you would see in, in a budget line item.
Yeah. No, it's just that because there's a disconnect between all the stuff that we're discussing here and mapping to what gets spent, you know? So I, I think because normally everything else we are used to seeing, okay, you're doing something, it's costing you so much, right? I mean, that, it's always easy to relate to, you know, dollars and activity. So.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, the twenty-four hundred dollars a month goes to the RCS admin. That also goes to the annual reporting to the DER for the programs for both the, what you're going to do over the course of the year and then going and looking back, compiling all that, remitting it to the DER. There's the solar program where we help in augmenting your staff in processing solar rebates. We do somewhere between forty and sixty of them for Reading. So that's.
That's part of the twenty-four hundred.
No, that is not. That is, that's a separate scope of work. Scope of work, ten, I believe. And then.
Sorry, ten what?
That's SOW ten is what we call it. Yeah. And that is, there's a, and an, an application fee per, per each application that we receive. And then a variable, seven percent of basically the, the rebate value is what we off-take as the, the processing, our cost to process that rebate. We do that same program for six other municipal light plants at the same percentages and cost values. And then the other program that you hold with us is for what is in effect the basic services for RMLD Drives Electric, the RMLD Drives Electric website, the customer education and awareness programs. So we staff the help desk, an eight hundred number. So we're able to, to be on call and support your customers in any questions they have about how they go through their EV adoption process. So those are the.
These we add here in our, in the territory. You know, okay. Don't operate on the spot. Okay. Sorry, keep going.
Yep. So those are the, the three services you, you currently have with us. That I guess the, the presentation I was going to go through and I can make it fairly rapid from here on, how to sort of talk about what else we do to sort of give you the full picture, I think, is Vivek was asking about is what other services do we provide? So the core services, as you can see here, you know, rebate processing, incentive processing, the solar program we do, we've got the rebate portal, commercial industrial programs. We both do that internally and externally and the EV program, which you, you currently off-take. Customer engagement, so marketing and events and other extended services. We do a fair amount of work with non-MLP customers, including helping to manage the more EV program.
So, so, so on that, so question for Paul and I mean, out of those services, are there things that you guys are already exploring what we may want so that at least we are aware of that?
Ah, we do keep a list. We do keep a list of the services that we have.
We go back to the previous slide. So what would we want from this?
So we do the solar rebate, that's the third one, solar program. And we do the EV, the RMLD Drives EV. I think with Noah's group, that's the two we currently have.
So that's what we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and we had the home energy assessment previously.
Right?
Yeah.
Which, which, but I guess I'm, when we did the bid award because they, they, ENE was not involved. And it was, I guess my question is, why was the scope written in the way the scope, and we already had a partner doing all this and we could have just done it augment for one piece rather than change the entire award. I guess I was not, wasn't very clear to me.
Yeah. It was not to change the structure or whatever the word you said of the heat pump program, but rather there's the overlap between the home energy assessment and the heat pump and the weatherization program we already had. And it was at the time, the HEA program was ending in June with ENE and the program, the contract with Abode was ending in August. So when we have a new bid for the heat pump and weatherization program, we, we, we didn't change any of the, you know, the, the scope of that program. But, but we just ended the HEA program without extending it, without going out for a new bid.
But it, it sounds like there was something customized in the bid process that prohibited.
No, it did not.
Uh, uh, I'm just what I'm hearing. So that's, that's why I'm, but I, again, I'm just curious as to why, you know, we had a service that.
So I guess ENE was a vendor, ENE was a service provider. A board was also a service provider. So we were working with a board, we were working with ENE.
But we got a bid from one and not the other because the bid precluded one from applying. If, if, because not all the same services were offered, if, if I'm understanding that correctly. So I guess, I, I, I guess.
So the.
Bid, that would be the question.
Just to clarify, the bid for the heat pump and the weatherization does not have a specific item for HEA. But it does involve a scoping visit to do weatherization. It also involves a menu J analysis for the heat pump installation. Both of these are very detailed home energy assessments. So we feel that is adequate for the customer to understand what they can do to improve the efficiency of their.
No, I understood, but that's a, again, a smaller, I don't, I don't know how many heat pump adoptions that we have here. It seems like a, a smaller.
We have about two hundred, over two hundred a year.
With T-pump?
Yeah.
Yeah. When you say heat pump, you, you, we're talking mini split. It used to be, yeah, okay.
Air source.
Just that, I think to you, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yeah.
Yeah, we're starting together.
Old school, old school, sorry.
A new program scope expanded to include ground source heat pump and water to air.
Okay.
So one, one thing I will note is you are the only municipal white plant that does not have standalone home energy assessments, which look at all end uses in your building, offered to your customers at effectively non-obligated. Effectively, non-obligated cost, that they don't have to go forward with doing other components at the tail end of it.
I don't know if that's true. I just talked to another MLP that they also don't have it.
That that that's on enveloping of the home, right?
So we look at every, we look at all the appliances, everything in the home and provide a report to the customer that. Gives them not just the weatherization and heat pump potential improvements, but. Replace your stove with a nux and stove, replace your refrigerator with an Energy Star one, do an Energy Star pool pump. For all the other ancillary improvements in the building beyond uh strictly speaking as weatherization and heat pumps.
So is this like what Mace would do in other areas?
Uh, so we don't go to the full end of then providing a uh an actionable proposal. We are, we go and we do the home energy assessment and then we'll answer questions for the customer about where they can potentially go to to get that work. And any other contextualized back and forth they may have about how we can help them move down that decarbonization. Or electrification journey that they may be looking to undertake.
And rough, rough numbers, I think half of our customers are are mass saves eligible, roughly, I think, right?
Okay, natural gas.
Yeah, correct, is that? Yes, yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done, we've done, we've done surveys.
Yeah.
It's about right, yeah, yeah.
But it would be good to know how many people are looking for that, uh, in assessment, aren't looking for a heat pump, aren't mass saves eligible, but are looking for, and how many of those you get? Is one, okay, it's true, he's one.
And just to confirm, we don't currently offer that.
But it'll be interesting, how many, how many sub proposals we get.
Uh, when we ended the HEA, um, we put the notice on the website and. Uh, I think we have maybe uh five to eight inquiries. People called and then we direct some, you know, you know, this is the, how we kind of incorporate the assessment as part of the heat pump and weatherization program. So we, you know, suggest for them to, you know, consider the heat pump and weather.
Yeah, it kept, it, we we caveated the whole energy assessment to have to have a heat pump in parallel with it. Because we're supplying electricity, we're not here to, you know, help out the oil industry, right? And and again, I agree or disagree, that was the decision. Um, but there are a lot of customers that could benefit from a home energy assessment. And because it wasn't offered, that that has been a turnoff at 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 Redding, like, because, like, now we don't do that.
And interesting.
As someone that mass saved us.
Interestingly enough, um, I would say ninety percent of the customers who are using, making. Uh, taking advantage of the heat pump program, they their old system are o- oil-based systems. So.
Yeah.
So if they are natural gas.
Yeah, yeah, that's an easy switch, yeah, well, you know.
So if they are a natural gases customer, they can get free assessment from natural grid.
Correct, correct.
So maybe would be, what would be helpful is just to understand as we approach budgeting to your, to your point, if we were to explore offering an incremental program. To the, to those customers who don't qualify otherwise, who don't have the interest in the heat pump and also don't call it that for math save, what would that cost? What would that look like? Um, this is part of our. Notation.
So I think this comes back to the point, I think Dave uh mentioned a few times about, you know. Weatherization for customers who are using oil and can benefit from natural grid. Um, I think that might be a approach that we can think about. Instead of just doing assessment, I mean, I. I'm just gonna make the comment, um, we did do the analysis of the past. Six to eight months of home energy assessment results. And the overwhelming majority of the recommended um measures that RMLD can influence are on weatherization. The insulation of addicts, walls, basement, you you name it. Um, if there's, you know, more efficient appliances, most customers already know. And by the end of last year, we already got rid of most of the appliances rebate anyway. Um, if the recommendation is to install, you know, more efficient windows, that's outside the scope of our business. So I I really believe, you know, this new program, that this new heat pump and weatherization program is really covering. What the customers can actually take actions to to do, instead of just having a nice report but not taking action. And I can say, customers who have taken the assessments in the past, they don't match the program participant. They're not, they 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 were not driven to actually participate in a rebate program. Uh, heat pump and I would, I wouldn't say they didn't participate in appliances, appliances is a very wide swat, you know, spread program. So everyone pretty much takes it if they, if they, you know, happen to buy a new appliance. So this is the kind of the think thinking behind it.
Just to understand what you just said, you're saying the people who took the assessment weren't doing anything with the information that you could tell.
Exactly.
Well, it definitely, you know.
Except for the heat pump ones.
Yeah, yeah, if 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 they decide not to, well, you're helping them out to make a choice, right? That's that's the whole point. Whether or not they do the windows or the insulation, if they decide not to the heat pump, that's a personal economic decision for a customer at that point in time. Right?
To be clear, though, if they decided, if they got the report, said they should replace their windows and they chose to replace their windows.
We would know that, we would not know that, right?
That, but what I think, what I was saying is I would just love to understand what it would cost to give them the option. It's an option that they have is if they were a national grid customer. It is not an option that they have at all. If they're, if they're not interested in initially pursuing heat pump. It doesn't mean that they, it might not say you would benefit from having a heat pump and maybe some of them decide, actually, this is economically feasible, I should do it. But if they don't have the option of doing that kind of broad assessment. I'm not saying we should offer it, I'm just saying it'd be helpful to understand the cost of what it would look like.
That makes sense to me, too. Anyway, great presentation, thank you very.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, if I can be really quick or we can just go straight to to Vins if you want, um, so, yeah. We do somewhere, I, the the numbers are a bigger range because it's building up over time, so for twenty nineteen till now, we've ranged between. Twelve hundred and twenty one hundred assessments a year, um, all our auditors are BPI certified. Uh, we help to meet the, under the statutory requirement that, or regulation. Uh, the only thing you have to do to meet your RCS minimum spend requirement is a home energy assessment. With Massachusetts Home Energy Scorecard, uh, that's what we help most of our light plants accomplish. That is being translated into the proposed MLP section of the the legislation. Carrying forward that it's home energy assessments with the Massachusetts Home Energy Scorecard. So that's what we help our light plants really accomplish by having snug pro with the scorecard from the DER built into the backend of it. Uh, customers can receive an energy kit, savings toolkit, so light bulbs, plug strips and other. Um, items, uh, direct ship to their home, drop ship to their home. When we had been doing home energy assessments, uh, I believe Reading had an online store, you were not participating in that. Cause you felt it was a better place to have your customers go through there, which makes a lot of sense. We've got two or three other light plants who do the same thing. So for rebate processing perspective, we administer rebate programs for ten municipal light plants. Broad spot swath of things, so our two employees, uh, one and a half employees are on track at least this year. By projections to be somewhere between twenty one hundred and twenty two hundred rebates processed. And that's about uh what we would call standard rebates to about two thirds towards that, so that's appliances, lawn equipment. Um, and EV level two charging, uh, and then complex rebates are things like weatherization and heat pumps. Just takes more time, more paperwork, different bits and pieces that we have to review. I think at the end of twenty twenty four, Reading did roughly eleven hundred rebates um across the year. Uh, so we process them all internally, um, we have our own CRM that we do that on. Um, solar rebates, this is built into that same system, we administer the program for seven light plants. We average somewhere between forty and seventy rebates uh processed through that per year. And again, it's all done internally, utilizing our own CRM with application front ends that we can move change and and adjust to. Programs on the fly, which is, I think, really nice and there's no additional cost to make changes unlike the old system that we had been using. So we provide a rebate portal to all light plants that we process rebates for. This allows them to be able to just jump in and look at, they got a customer called up saying, hey, what's the status rebate XYZ? Or they have caught a customer who's wondering why their bill credit hasn't been applied or something like that. And they can, without even needing to come and ask us to do it, they can jump into the portal and go through and figure that out. Uh, it's also where we have all of our light plants sign in and do the MLP approval process. Which is basically saying, hey, this customer is in good standing, you can process the rebate. Uh, commercial programs, we help manage commercial audit and rebate programs for ten light plants. We do internal staff up to about twenty five thousand square feet, that's typically, when you get past that, building facility systems start getting. A little bit outside of what you consider small business, sort of standard prototypical five to ten ton rooftop unit type things. Uh, and at that point, we've got uh an established contract with the Rise Group. Um, they are also a technical services provider to the IOUs under the Mass Save Program. And they've worked across a couple of other states specifically doing energy efficiency, energy analysis work. Um, they've got a long history of that, I will raise my hand and say I'm from there, so I'm fairly comfortable with the work they do. Um, so that helps, but we process uh commercial rebates for things like lighting, LED lighting upgrades. Refrigeration controls, level two charging stations and commercial heat pumps. Uh, EV programs, you currently have our core services program, which is the white labeled uh website. The residential help desk and any type of rebate advisory um for those. So historical monthly volume, not specifically for your program, but across the ten light plants. Is about twenty five hundred customers, websites, we're seeing about a thousand active users. That builds in a comprehensive services, which add in things like marketing support, which is uh a regular cadence of marketing pieces that come out. As well as adding in commercial support, so engaging with your commercial customers about how do they put in workplace level two charging for their employees or fleet charging. Uh, those types of things, and then we just have bulk uh T and M services. Uh, we also have an online tool called the Drive and Save Wizard, which is very much a pick your own pathway type tool. Which lets the customer sort of compare two or three different options on a car and then get a breakdown specific to your community and your rates. And your incentives about what their total cost of ownership would be.
Not so, when you say EV program, so this would not be a residential EV charging, right?
This is both residential and commercial.
So like if Dave is like an EV charger.
Mm-hmm.
Is he on your system?
So we.
I have a plug and hybrid, right? So I mean, I have my two forty volt charging line, but I I'm, I don't know if I, I I don't see anything in here, so.
So we don't, if we're a, we work with the light plant to help encourage them to put stuff like marketing pieces on their social media. Um, to have the website out there, promote the website, promote the opportunity for customers in town. To learn about electric vehicles.
So this is about learn about electrification.
Correct, it's EV education and awareness.
EV education, so if you're, if you're an EV charger today, you have no visibility on this, right?
So we don't know who the individual customers are in your community who have EVs, correct?
Okay, so I just wanted to understand.
Yep.
But with the smart meters, we'll be able to find out.
Theoretically, yeah, you'd be able to find them pretty easily, yeah, or, yeah, theoretically fairly easily, yeah.
We'll get you, Dave.
So uh, some extended services, so we do, we have been doing charger uh infrastructure advisory services, so what that. That means is working with some institutional fleet customers, we've got one customer's electrifying their hundred and forty vehicle. Um, fleet and we're helping them walk through that process. Uh, in one other light plant, we're helping uh a couple of their customers actually walk through the process of. Uh, selecting the vendor, um, going through uh equipment selections and just helping to shepherd that process. So that the customer has a good end result with equipment that's gonna work for what they're trying to accomplish. Um, we are also the dealership engagement vendor for the more EV program. Uh, that's the uh thirty five hundred dollars on the hood, if you buy an EV under fifty five thousand dollars in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, E and E is effectively directly responsible for, I think, two hundred and forty of the three hundred and change. Uh, registered dealers as part of that program. And we do a lot of events on an annual basis. Uh, we do tabling, we help at uh heat pump forums, uh, we also help put on trainings. Uh, EV events are really the the core thing that we do an awful lot of, in large part because of our uh more EV. Uh, relationship, we're out, I think, doing, last month, we were at ten or fifteen different events. Sometimes back to back on the same days with multiple staff members. Um, but we also, for the light plants that we work with and just some other uh municipalities will come to us and say, hey, can you help us put on a a ride and drive? Um, and we'll help provide those types of services.
Right? RMLD doesn't have EV, man.
We we did, we did last year, I do not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so that didn't involve you guys?
It's enough.
Okay.
Okay, um, sorry, I'm gonna have to cut.
Yep.
Short so that we can get to, I know you wanted to. Like a light of update, so, any other, okay?
Okay, so I I know John went over sort of a high level, I just wanted to get, you know, to a little bit more about what we do at. Any strategies, um, we represent thirty of the municipal light plants, so not just the. Uh, the E and E clients, um, I also have nine of the MWEB clients um that I also represent. Um, we have strong relationships, um, extra strong ones in your district. Um, and uh, meet with them um quite often. Um, I I, over the past um year since I last came here. Um, we had two meetings, one which was legislative and regulatory officials. To give them an update on all of the great things that RMLD has in planning. Um, and and is looking at like the battery storage. And then I helped with uh getting those folks to come to the um, the ribbon cutting, I know Vivek, you were there. Um, but, um, you know, we do advocacy, um, strategy development for for projects that. Uh, whether it's a grant opportunity or what, or whether, um, in the case of, um. The ACES grant previously for the the project in North Reading. Um, we also helped with uh getting the assessor to understand uh valuation of. Um, of that material because the, um, because the system is not, you know, it's, it's on. Uh, public land, but it's also owned by a private company. Next slide. So accomplishments, um, again, the be- the biggest of late was the uh climate bill. And in getting the municipal light plants uh to the uh twenty thirty, forty and fifty goals. Um, the same as the IOUs, um, to net zero by twenty fifty. Um, and and you guys know we're well, you know, RMLD is well uh on their way to achieving that goal. Um, we helped develop the streetlight program, the solar rebate program for municipal light plants. And again, these were programs that came from ideas, um, they didn't exist. They were only being offered to uh IOUs and by us working with the commissioners, we were able to create. Um, these programs. Um, I've also done Home Rule, um, couple of times have worked on the potential of doing. Um, an Article ninety seven um for a new transformer, um, that's been on again, off again. And um, that may come back on again uh at at some point in time. Um, but working on the special legislation uh to to do things like that. Um, as I mentioned, that the tax settlement and um, and also our presence. Um, we have been on every energy-related commission. Um, that the governor and or legislature, when they have appointments, uh, to represent um municipal light plants. Next slide. Um, one of the touch on this, I know John uh briefly did, but um, to summarize it quickly, it's debt. Um, we're supportive of uh House thirty five forty nine. Um, the bill was just uh this past week extended in committee, so no action on any of the bills. Uh, in in the uh telecommunications, uh, utility and energies, energies committee have moved. Um, but. Um, but because of their rules, they need to be extended or they just die. Um, that bill in particular was extended this this week, so that means it's still alive. My sense is that it may even be joined to um another larger bill. The past three sessions, they've passed an omnibus bill at the State House. Um, it appears the vehicle may be the governor's um affordability bill and taking other bills and attaching them to this bill may be one of the opportunities for something like that.
Um, quick follow up on that one.
Sure.
Because yeah, John mentioned this last time, and um I think it was the first time we knew that E and E had taken a position. Um, and I'm just wondering, I mean, the, I think the operating room, it says you'll let us know what your positions are or somewhere it does that the the board or the general manager gets told what what is the any proposing to support or oppose on Beacon Hill? And I guess just going forward, I think it would be good. I think I might speak for my colleagues. We'd like to know kind of in a timely manner, what is it that you're you're advocating or not advocating? Because when did the, when did it occur that that position was taken?
When, um, so this is a meme um related position. So uh it came up at a meme meeting uh at the Legislative Committee. And what we've been doing is uh E and E, M WAC and a meme representative have been pitching as a three person panel at most of the hearings. And uh this was one of the bills that we decided.
But what, I'm just wondering when, when did E and E take the position?
This was I believe I'll get you the exact date, but it was last month.
It was only a month ago?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Maybe he was only here a month.
Month, a month and a, it was before that.
Okay.
Might have been the week before he came here.
Oh, okay. It was that fresh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there were, there there have been seven hearings to date. There's a hearing scheduled for next week.
Because that bill's also kicking around for a bunch of months, like a year or so, right? So but we weren't hearing anything about like what did our M L D board want to support or oppose, or what were you proposing to support or oppose? So alls I'm saying is going forward is like in a more timely manner, hey, this bill is up there.
Sure.
What do you want us to do? Or tell us what you propose to do. That's all.
Okay.
Well, one of, one of the challenges we as commissioners have is that meme in particular, and I'm guessing any by association um is geared toward general managers. The general managers have input. And while commissioners are generally in municipal light plants intended to set policy, we have literally not been invited to those meetings and discussions, so it's either through the generosity of a general manager to make time to talk about his position that he's taking on behalf of our M L D with the commissioners. Or we're trying to establish your commissioners light association so that the commissioners can have input to things
Right.
as policy people and um and and not just depend on the the generosity of the general manager to communicate that back through us.
And and maybe to your point, it could be implemented through an R M L D policy that the general manager shall report to the board and get a board approval on whatever position the general manager proposes to take through me and something like that. What do you think, Paul? I mean, I don't know. I mean, some way to, some way to operationalize this.
I mean, you want alignment, right? You want alignment. So you know, you don't want to be taking a position that's not not even known. That's not even.
We're, we're the local politicians for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, and there's five of us. I can completely understand why we're not invited. There's too many of us.
Sure.
And you go into that room, right? And you leave the general manager and they agree to disagree about policies and you know, um, who knows what's gonna happen by Omas, right? Um, how many bills get filed today? It might be alive tomorrow.
But leaving biomass aside, just the larger principle that the board is the policymaking, we get elected for better or worse to do do this job and you know, we should be in the loop at a timely manner.
On a, on a given session, um, there's about three hundred and sixty bills in the T U E committee. There's about thirty that we pay attention to.
Yeah.
Not that we necessarily care about. And when push comes to shove, there's probably ten that that we end up commenting on one way or another. But um to your point, Commissioner, I I we don't have, I I don't have a problem letting the G M know um to either inform the board, uh because quite frankly, I'd rather have boards in addition
Right.
um, send letters to the legislative delegation in support of or against something that we're
Right.
for or against.
And there have been times when the G M has come to us and said, hey, sign this. We want you guys to support.
Sure.
But other times we don't know anything about, like, all year this bill was kicking around and I'd never heard of it and I had been involved a few years ago, but I had not even heard of it. So they all, it's just this larger point. And I think the way to operationalize it is, you know, it makes sense for you to report and talk to the general manager, not to us. I get that. And like, and the other way around. And but for us to have a policy that we currently do not have in our R M L D policies that says there needs to be a feedback loop between the G M or that the G M shall ask us or we shall, that's up to us to enact that, I think. But I think we're All right. Okay.
And to answer your question, these are the, I believe there's eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Um, and then the ones where you see twice, the same bill's been filed in both the House and the Senate. But those are bills that we have um put a favorable or an opposition to. Um, and I'm glad to share um i- if you're interested um what we filed to the legislature on on all of those.
Thinking through how to put in an alternative way that might be more consistent, um you know, maybe just a recommendation to E and E around how you communicate to your owner. Um, MLPs, you know, maybe it's a monthly up legislative update or quarterly legislative update or something, you know, email to the G M's that they can then pass along to us. Something that just provides us with general guidance on where your attention is and where our attention be in that space. Might be some, you know, I'm I'm sure other MLPs might benefit from that too. And then it's not really a internal policy. It's part of the service that you provide.
I mean, in specific, you guys are an owner, so you also get my updates from the board meetings. And I I think that's probably a good format um to either do quarterly or
Yeah.
you know, just just to keep communication moving, but um I think with the G M, it's more if something is important, um but I don't, I don't know to to, you know, Commissioner Talbot's point. I don't know that something is or isn't more important to you than it is to the general everyone else. So um but letting you know the things that we're watching, I think.
Yeah, yeah, of course. With that, you're, these are things you you're thinking of opposing or supporting. That would be the action play. Yes, if there's fifty things, then
Because it take a position on over.
But when it specifically is about MLP eligibility for recs, that would seem to be an obvious one.
Sure.
You know, some of them are going to be less obvious, but this one would seem to have been obvious.
And then, you know, to just in general to, you know, I I like I said, I have thirty municipal light plants, which is a lot of reps and senators. Um, but in particular, the R M L D delegation, every one of your members is on top of, I mean, we we keep them informed about everything going on. But they are on top of just about everything and quite frankly, reach out to me a lot to say, hey, is this something that would be helpful to our M L D if, you know, we pushed it forward? So um, you're pretty lucky compared to a lot of others where I go in and introduce myself again for the third or fourth time.
Makes sense. Yeah, I think we got a good delegation.
Thank you again for coming in to to give us.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just, just to follow up on on last month and maybe, maybe this is an an email. But John mentioned something last time about the commissions on power purchase agreements of twenty five cents a megawatt hour. And that was I, something I had not really understood. And I think to Vivek's point of understanding what fees we're paying, if we could get a sense of what does that add up to? How many PPAs are we paying twenty five cents a megawatt hour? And do we also pay that when when we have you sell recs? Um, and then what is the magnitude of that across a year or the life of of an agreement? So it's, I could, I could follow up with an email. Is what does that add up to? Because that was new to me. Um, and then the other one was, when you guys bring PPAs to us, are are there fees paid to E and E by the power producer? Or commissions of any kind that the power producer is paying or is paying E and E?
Only the settlement fee.
Okay. So that it's not like you're the real estate broker, that bad analogy, but for
Right.
You're not, you're not, they're not paying you to be a broker for their power in some way or, you know.
Okay. We're doing the analysis, making the recommendations and the negotiation of whether it's a good deal or a bad deal.
Yeah.
And then trying to drive the price down to what's fair um compared to what we see in the market. And then put it out to um the the munis for purchase or not.
Okay.
So 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 Ren and Paul, I think instead of looking at the full contract, if we can get a one pager that says this is what we've been spending. So I just wanted to be very specific, like, you know, rather than saying, okay, read the contract.
Yeah.
You know, give me a one pager. It says this is what we pay for in terms of E and E services going historically and Paul, in terms of what we may go and be doing going forward, you know, just he- help us understand if there are any variations going forward, so.
Okay, so just to go back to our comments.
I mean, the budget, I mean, the budget has so much detail, you know, so it'll be easy for us.
Maybe you're on the cab, I'm on the board. What if we get together and write an email, cohere on what it is we're asking for that it's, I'm asking for something, you're asking for something. And I mean, not that we speak for the whole board, but that would be an organized way to to send an email back.
Sounds good to me.
All right, I mean, sure. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guy. Appreciate what you guys do in the legislature. That's 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 a un- unheralded tab, right, from from anybody.
True. Thank you very much.
I love that, right?
Um, okay, I think we're moving along to I R update. Megan. I have Megan listen here. Yeah, okay.
I think we were scheduled to do the update on the customer segmentation study that we did. Uh, and then I'll do some, you know, customer program updates. Uh, the first one is segmentation study. Uh, in the spring, we um ha- had a professional survey company uh to help us uh carry out the survey. This is the first segmentation study we uh that I know we've ever done.
It's here.
Sorry, we were just looking.
It's here, it's here. No, no, it's not.
This is not in here.
Materials are not in our iPad.
It was in the package that was sent. It was in the package that was sent to us, but
It's not this one.
Not on this one.
Not on that one.
Okay, that's fine. Look, we're sorry for being distracted. Go ahead.
Um, the reason to do the segmentation study is when I got here, I hear two kind of trend of thoughts. One is, oh, you know, we need to do more social media posting, we know, you know, we 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 need to take on all these digital ways of communicating to the customers, which is the trend now. And then I hear the other thought is, you know, especially for the customer service group, what they deal with is always people who come in in person or who call. And, you know, they need help with some very basic services and they may not use internet, they may not use email, they don't look at the websites. And another kind of a similar sort of source of 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 kind of along the same line is our specialists when they get calls uh about rebates and programs, you can tell they don't look at the website. So basically, our specialists are repeating the information on the websites over the phone to the customers. So that kind of prompted me to think like, okay, what, who are our customers? You know, who are we dealing with? You know, what, 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 what are the characteristics that will help us to actually engage our customers more effectively? So this study is really for our internal analysis, so I'm not sharing the whole result to a public meeting. Um, but I want to kind of walk us through like, you know, the segments, what they mean, what, you know, what are the implications? And also have a little bit of summary discussion of some of the findings of the uh of the survey uh in terms of, you know, customer attitudes or choice or preference in certain uh topics. So this is what
So just so I can maybe restate, so the goal of this study is just to understand how to better engage with customers and ensure that they're getting the information they need and and uh able to take advantage of all the different programs.
Yes, to uh we want to kind of modify or develop our marketing strategy based on the insight we gain from this study.
Of who our customers are and what they're looking for.
Right, got it.
Uh, we sent out nineteen thousand surveys that we have emails for, but this is all residential. We got nine hundred and sixty six valid responses. I don't know if I can take a a show of hands, how many of you did the survey?
I think I did.
Oh.
Good answer.
You think?
My wife, I hope she did.
I
Um, the uh, so statistically, the five percent response rate is really good. So we're happy with that. Um, the segmentation, the definitions here, but I already kind of explained, you know, the really the ideas uh to understand, you know, the types of uh customers that we have, but it's not to label our customers. Like, I want to emphasize that. It's just really understand, you know, the demographics and then their tendency toward electricity, toward technology, toward utility service, and I'll explain that more. Um, um, I'll just go over demographics a little bit. I think this is not news to you, but I just want to compare that with the the census, that's the American Community Survey. So we did do that analysis to compare with, you know, the the proportions of each each um demographic group. And it matches very well with some, you know, small exceptions, which al- always happens with the sample. Um, and then the sort of the, the, you know, the, the race, the educational level, whether you own a home, you know, your, your personal relationship and whether you're employed and all that, that's all matching the census a result. With the, the only kind of difference is that median age uh for our survey respondents, the median age is fifty eight. It's on the older side because our respondents are people who are responsible for paying for electricity. So the the census also accounts for children and, you know, young, young people. So so that's the only difference you have.
No, no, I, I, that's me. I responded.
Recognize ourselves.
I did. Hey.
Don't break, don't break.
I did. Hey, that, yeah.
All right, representative. Um, so how we did the, so the survey is a long, then maybe that's by uh it takes almost I'm sorry.
I don't understand what you were showing at this point.
Yeah, I I was trying to say, um, the survey takes about thirty minutes. And what I'm showing here are the questions that are leading to the algorithm to to assign each respondent to a segment. So there are two groups of questions. Uh, one is customer's attitude toward technology. So there are maybe eight statements there where you would um on a rate of one to four, you know, you strongly agree, you agree, you strongly disagree, you disagree, the the on a scale. And then the second group of questions, uh customer's attitude toward electricity and utility service.
Okay, so so these are the questions and you have to score one to four
Yeah.
on each of these.
Yeah, you select whether you strongly agree or agree. Yeah.
I would have known.
Yeah, it's a, it takes a while to to finish the survey. So I applaud those nine hundred and sixty six people who finished it. Um, so that's how the the, so that's why we hired the survey company. They did this all online and they did the backend segmenting people. But then we did all the other uh the other analysis in-house because of the cost concern. Well, I mean, we have the analysts and they do a great job, so. Um, so this is the segments that is the direct result of the survey. Um, don't like think too much about the names of these segments, but I want to just kind of uh get you to the takeaways. The first one, you know, what what we call early adopters. They are more like the sort of them more likely to have children. They are, they are very tech savvy. They do all the, you know, the, the, the EVs, the solar They do all the, you know, the 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 EVs, the solars, or not not so much EV, it's all about, they do the, like, you know, uh, and. The kind of the uh rebate program, they would participate. This, this is like the easiest sort of segment of the customer that, you know. It's easier to engage with them. So that's, that's the part that is a almost like a captured audience. And then the our group, two of them in the second takeaway, that's called Interested Explorers and Tech Savvy Savers. They are almost like the kind of the two end of the spectrum where are the Interested Explorers, they are inherently, they want to be good. To the environment, they wanna do good, but they are very afraid of technology. They're not tech savvy. So the other side, the end of that is, you know, they, they're very good at technology. They tend, they want to save money, but they may not, you know, if if you say it bluntly, they may not care about environment that much. So these are the, but there's a potential to kind of combine the sort of the different uh objectives for these two groups of customers. So that's the second group, second takeaway. They are the biggest potential for us to engage them more. And then the other two groups, uh, the comfort keepers are basically, you know, people who are happy where they are. And then they really, you know, don't want to engage with the utilities too much. They're happy with their rate, they're, you know, happy with the service, they're there. And the satisfied supporters, they are a little more, so they are tend, they tend to be older, the uh median age is like seventy. They tend to be women, and then they tend to not be able to use technology. So we feel, you know, this third takeaway is like, if we do more focused outreach, we can maybe help these customers to be engaged a little more. Um, then we compare with the national stats. Um, in early adopters, which are the easiest, sort of easiest group to engage. Were actually ten points higher, like ten percent higher than national uh uh average. And in the sort of a little more challenging to engage groups, which is the last uh two that I said. There we have actually ten percent less. So that's kind of the overall picture of our customers in terms of segments. Does that make sense? I know it's all new concepts and then the the words are mouthful.
No, I I've seen things like this before, so to me it makes sense. I guess the the question is, okay, so what are we doing with it?
Right, right. So that's the part I cannot speak at the public meeting, where doing more detailed analysis, try to, you know, actually. Kind of identify the customers in each group and then try to tailor our messaging and even like the method of communications, right? If people who are not tech savvy, maybe we should go back to more traditional way of communications, we should go back to door hammers or, you know, actual mail them things. Um, uh, to or.
Can't talk about that. I mean, I I certainly don't wanna talk about individual.
Exactly, that's where where it gets tricky at that I don't want.
Strategy against each of those.
So, yeah. So we are, we're, we're in the process of developing the the strategies.
Okay.
The marketing strategy.
She can't talk about it, she's not prepared to talk about it, I think, is that more accurate?
She can't talk about it in a public.
Yeah, the the specific way we're doing the analysis, I just, I cannot share that at a public meeting. It's at the, you know.
Yeah, again. Wanna sit in a private meeting and talk about it.
Right, 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 right.
I just wanna know.
Yeah.
What do we do? What is the strategy against each of the pies?
Yeah, to Paul's point, we are developing the strategy, so at some point, when we have, you know, more kind of a a settled. Change of strategy, I think we can share that again. But again, then like we 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 we. We don't wanna be saying, oh, here are this group, there are those group, we we really wanna be careful about that. But in our kind of a, the, I wanna add some subtlety in how we're actually messaging. Uh, the, you know, the the program that we're doing, so if that makes sense.
So this, it it, this could sound crude, but eighty percent of the people don't really. It it that that's what I'm getting is the the top, there's a top five percent, eighty fifteen five rule, pretty much anything, five percent really go for it, fifteen, yeah, eighty percent.
Yeah.
You know, it's. That's an old, that's an old number, we're a little bit better than that, right? Well, I know, but I I the old rule is eighty. Right, eighty twenty, right? We're better than eighty twenty, right? Much better, we're by forty sixty. And how do we care, that, gonna be blunt, how do you care, right? You're gonna penetrate the group that doesn't wanna be talked to.
Early adopters, the blue is interested explorers.
So.
So to me, those, and and then maybe a little bit of the. You've got eighty, um, a little less. And eighty percent of the population. So the question is just, how do you engage that better?
Okay.
It's actually easier problem of, it's like, so that it's it's inverted, like, so you actually have to target only twenty percent.
I think you're, yeah, I mean, you you may never get them, so maybe they're just the, you know, it's in the newsletter, fine. But these folks are the ones that you wanna say, listen, they're, they might take the opportunity and they might be interested in these programs. How do we, how do we make sure that they are aware?
Mm-hmm.
And know what to do and have the right level of support to get it done.
Yep.
But this perils uh very much, we, the Climate Advisory Committee with RMLD, uh partnered a. Couple of years ago and did a, back to year-to-year survey on energy use and adoption of heat pumps. And um, and and so I think. That kind of data, the kind of data you have, I think pairs together if, if we can understand that people who have. Oil or natural gas for heat and central heating for air conditioning. That's a good opportunity for heat pumps because you've already got the air movement system in your house. And it's just a matter of the cost value of switching from oil to heat pumps or gas to heat pumps, but there's, and that makes up. A vast majority of the population, but then that's subdivided into these categories, how many of those receive information in particular ways? So you're trying to reach out. So pairing the two, the two data sets together, you know, there's, there's a large part of uh the community which would. Are, could be adopters if we can get the right information to them in in a particular way that understands that. Um, and and yes, some of it's technical and and might. Um, be hard for some people to understand and and other people who. Wanna see information in particular way, so how do we get information to those groups?
Yeah.
So is it like next month, two months that we would have the strategies, you think, by the by segments?
I would say probably in the next couple of months, yeah. We're we're still looking, looking through the 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 detailed question, there are a lot, there are a lot. And I'm sharing the results of some of the questions that we already uh finished analyzing. Cause like, you know, a thousand, almost a thousand responses and it's kind of, every question, almost every question has like subparts of, you know. Information that you need to kind of glean from. Um, but anyhow, so other than the segments, these are. Some of the specific questions that are included in the survey that I thought was interesting to share. Just so that we are all kind of on the same page of thinking about. I think, I think this whole presentation is really, I wanna present the 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 kind of the numbers, the facts almost. And then I think it's upon all of us to 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 kind of figure out a way how we can better engage our customers. Because it's not easy. So I wanna kind of pre- preset that.
So I think the data is helpful, I just wanna be conscious of time, like. I think the marketing team is is kind of, their job is to look at the data, look at the segments. And and say what the strategy should be.
Right, right, but it's not only the marketing team, I think the whole specialist team is also on. Uh, they will have to be on this because the marketing team is basically packaging the information, the messaging. And finding uh and 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 implementing the specific communication channels. But it's the specialist team that actually come up with the specific like content of that messaging. Um, anyhow, I'm gonna go quickly here. This one is just to show where our customers are uh finding their information about electricity. It's interesting that um the majority finds it on internet, like Google search. Um, for uh RMLD, it's about forty percent, so we can do better, that's one of our goals. Maybe, you know, we want them to be our, you know, source of information, um, electricity and, you know, power. Um, a lot of them do also turn to their their friends and family for information, that's also interesting. Um, the next one is EV adoption. So the chart on the upper left, that shows. Uh, the percentage of customers for each segment, um, whether they would consider EV or not. Over half says, yes, we wanna buy EV, but if you look at the up, lower right uh chart. It says, if you buy EV, what kind of EV, do you, would you consider battery-only EV? An overwhelming majority said no. So they would wanna get either a plug-in EV or a a gas hy- hybrid. So that is a very interesting uh insight, I thought.
Wait, can you see how tall those columns are? So the bottom right ones, for the various types of customer. Far left says. No battery electric vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they're.
But what is, sorry, can you just?
So they would.
Versus a plug-in?
Yeah, they would not buy a battery-only EV, they wanna buy a hybrid or plug-in hybrid.
So hybrid.
Yes.
Okay, I got confused about the plug-in part.
The plug-in is, like, so the gasoline hybrid is you charge the battery with the gasoline.
It's electric only or hybrid is the question.
Correct, yeah, that's right, basically. I hope people understood, like, take this conversation like that the the people taking the survey actually understood all those distinctions, you know.
It's described in the survey, that's why it's taking so long. The next one is solar adoption. Um, so the, again, the first chart on the upper um left. That's whether you are interested in installing solar. Um, the majority actually are not interested. Uh, and then the one on the lower right, uh, asking, you know, we do have this credit program. If you send electricity back to RMLD, you get a credit. They are, uh, I would say, you know, over half are aware that they can do that, but they're not, you know, that kind of contrast with the first chart where. Even though they know, the only way you can sell back is to install solar at at the moment, but they are not interested in installing solar. So it's just a little bit of a, uh.
Did we get any data on like those who are interested but have not done it yet, what their barrier is?
Um.
The the, I'm curious.
Not, not in that specific way, no. We have questions about, you know, how how worried you are about, you know, the cost of electricity. We have general questions on that, but not that. Though the way, uh, when we hire the survey company, the. The the questions are pretty much preset. This is a nationally used uh survey, so we have, we haven't got to that part.
Yeah, I I just, it's it's rates first, rate rate on return on your investment, right? If you can afford it, okay. If it's borderline, uh, rates are cheap enough where it's a thirty-year payback.
Yeah, yep.
Not worth it to me.
Probably what you would say in your survey, or maybe it is what you said in your survey. I'm curious if like, the, the, yeah, the. A broad perspective, cause if if it's like, you could have thirty percent more adoption if you could just figure out a better rebate program, or if you could figure out like a.
Yeah, but you're paying, yeah, and 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 it is right for that to go on the backs of other rate payers, right? That's the hour question.
And I don't, I don't have a proposed.
Yeah.
Solution that avoids that, but I'm, I guess I'm just trying to understand it, and maybe there are other barriers. Maybe they just don't know where to start, you know, I mean.
Team thirty's home with the widely spaced rafters. Woods.
Yeah.
Three hundred-year-old oak trees around it.
Again, if we're gonna talk about personal experience, like, when I first, I don't have solar right now, but when I first started looking at solar, I called several solar companies and they're like, oh, we don't, we don't work with running. We don't work in RMLD. And I I did enough research to figure out that that's not true, they just don't think it's, it's gonna pay back, so they don't work with us, but. People, th- there's information that would be helpful for folks who actually do wanna pursue that, that might be.
And I think sometimes people do it thinking they're not gonna convert their house to heat pumps. And they say, oh, so I'm just offsetting my existing bill, which is small. Convert your house to heat pumps, now you've got a large electric bill, now the offset can be, can be much greater, so.
And this is the last one uh survey question I wanna share, it's on peak demand response. Um, if you look at the chart on the left, I want you to remember this chart, it says, you know, oh, uh, forty, at least forty percent. Uh, over forty percent of customers say that they have reduced during peak times. Just remember that. They believe they have. And then the.
Get your actual data when you get this.
You 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 get the plot. Uh, the charts on the right is also interesting because this is related to like the AMI meters or installing all the TOU rates we will be implementing. Uh, I want to, you know, talk about the one on the bottom. Uh, actually, there's uh forty percent of them uh uh would would allow RMLD to adjust their usage. If there's incentive, I think that's encouraging. Uh, we can also, like, you can interpret that statement in different ways, but I, overall, I think that's an encouraging thing. Because I think with demand response, that's different from EV and solar, EV and solar, you have to invest upfront. And demand response is more of a, something you you, you you take action without the financial burden per se, almost. Um, so that's my. That's uh, that's the kind of general um takeaway. So, um, in terms of the updates on the customer programs, I'll do the first one, this is the, so we, um. We're entering a new age almost, right? So we're looking at hourly data, it's no longer like monthly, when we do monthly bill. Our data turns into millions and millions of rows of data, so we need new tools. So that, um, internally, that took some learning curve for the IT department to actually allow us to use the new tools. So we, I think we finally got it sorted out maybe two weeks ago. So this is a very preliminary result, but it's still very telling, it's very interesting, so that's why I decided to share a little bit. Uh, earlier, forty percent customer believed they save, they they reduce energy use during towers. And we look at all our peak, uh, share the peak, the peak alerts program. Uh, we look at all, I think it's be, uh, twenty-nine hundred customers who signed up for peak alerts. Uh, over the last year, from, you know, July last year to August this year, only five percent actually. On on the whole, reduced usage.
Can I just say, I think this is the first time I've ever seen this analysis done. Maybe it's been done, but it's great, it's amazing to be able to see.
Yeah.
And actually, what people are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even if you didn't know what they said, to actually know what's going on out there is great.
Yeah, yeah.
We got five percent survey return, so it's a five percent.
A coincidence, five percent, the perfect percentage. So I'm showing three, like. No, no.
But what is the ma, if you were to say the magnitude of that five percent, did did that add up to two megawatts?
No, no.
One megawatt?
It's maybe uh a few, it's a hundred forty-five customers who reduced maybe two. Kilowatt hours, so that's what you're looking at.
Negligible.
So it's.
Yeah.
Is that?
Just to be clear, so these are people who have signed up for the.
Equal art, equal, yeah, you know.
The math, is that a third of a megawatt, or did I understand the math wrong? A third of a megawatt hour, not even?
Not even.
So so Megan, like, so when you send out an alert saying, don't use load, so, so like what we would do is. You don't do laundry, you don't charge your car.
Yeah, it's very small, yeah.
I, but I think we also should look at, how are we communicating that? Because just sending an email.
Exactly. Yeah, that's why, because we, yeah, and also because we don't, didn't have the data. So the ideal way, I would think, is the same way we, when we do the, as when we do the current PDR. Where we calculate the savings, we give them an incentive, we share the in- the savings. For the residential customer, because we didn't have the data at this level, we couldn't come up with a reasonable incentive. You know, if you save two kilowatt hours, do I give you what, five cents? You know, it's it's hard to 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 get to that. So so this is a start, I just wanna share this and also just quickly. Um, the first one on the left, they have a EV charger and they also installed solar. They did reduce during the cold peaks, so this is like when we called for three to four hours, this is not just what, the one hour. The one hour we're we're still in the process of doing that analysis, they reduced, but it's very small, it's like one kilowatt hour. So you know, they probably aren't using EV chargers anyway during those hours, because that's why you don't see the reduction. It's already, you know, already in there. And then the one on the, on the top on the right. Uh, this, this customer doesn't have anything, but interestingly enough, we don't, we don't know if it's a coincidence, because they actually shifted their peak. It's a small thing, the yellow line is the 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 actual usage. Their their baseline usage, the the peak. Their, their baseline usage, the, the peak is at hour ending eighteen, but because we called the peak. And they shift their peak to hour ending fourteen. So we don't know if it's a conscious effort or not, but we, we're trying to kinda understand what, what that means. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
How many of your customers are time of use customers?
Uh, maybe, uh, uh, five hundred, a few hundred, less than, less than a thousand.
Okay, yeah, no, because, I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking at Dave and I'm saying, okay, if you're a time of use customer, then you're basically, even if you're shifting your load, I mean. You're doing that anyway, right, I mean, as a time of use customer, you're, so, so there's no baseline change. I mean, i- if you're, 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 you're compliant.
Thank you, Vivek, that's exactly the second point I'm trying to make.
So like I'm saying, even if I do anything, it, it's really noise, because it's really, I, I, I'm shifting all my load to later.
Well, if you shift your load, but if it's outside the peak window, you're still, you're still creating savings, that's. You know, even though the total kilowatt hours may still be the same.
In terms of my behavior, on a day with or without that message, it's gonna be the same, right? Because I've shifted the load always to after hours.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, like, if we implement the kind of all out, like opt-out time of use, which means everyone is on it, unless you ask us not to be on it. Everyone is on that, will be, you know, more likely to behave like Dave, like, okay, I'm just gonna use my charger during off-peak already.
We already do, we're, we already think like that.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Yeah, so these, the, the active demand response will work in tandem with the peak time of use rates when we implement it.
I'm plugging my charger.
Maybe it did. Yep, that's seven kilowatt, yep.
Two days.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's me, by the way, no. I, this is from memory, but ten years ago, when we had, I think it was four hundred hot water heaters. That we could control with a broadband connection, and, and there was a guy here who could hit a button at the peak. And would shut off whatever fraction of those four hundred hot water heaters that might have happened to have been on at that time. And he claimed that when he did that, he could see demand drop a half a megawatt. That's memory, it could be wrong, but it, it, it sorta makes sense, like, if you think a hundred hot water heaters that are pulling five thousand watts, that's. How many is that? That's five hundred, three thousand, that's, that, that, that's a half a megawatt. So if a quarter of them were on, happened to be on, and he was able to control, he shut a hundred off. He just, he just shed a half a megawatt with four hundred timers on electric wa- hot water heaters, and then we got rid of it, but.
Because.
Copper lines, the, the connections, the.
Yeah, the broad, yeah, yeah.
Broadband connection with copper, that was problematic.
It wasn't, you know, it was falling apart, nobody was keeping up with making sure that people had their wifi updated or whatever, then one of them, I think one of them. Sparked out and somebody complained, this thing, I have a fire, my house burned down, that didn't happen, but there was, that was the, the worry. Of having stuff in people's houses.
Yeah.
And so there was a decision taken to just pull them all out.
Yeah, so that's a good point, because the, that's why we participate in the, uh, M W X Connected Homes Program. Customers elect to be, uh, to allow, um, M W X via virtual peaker to control their load directly, similar to. Yeah, inside, there's like a seven page of terms and.
Whatever happens is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So the, it would always seem to me, though, that simply promoting, even if it's not controlled by you. Give people the timer and give them two hundred bucks to put it in, get, or pay for the electrician to put it in and say, look, please set this thing to forty-eight. And that it's oh, never on forty-eight, cause nobody needs to heat their water between, basically, right? Or if they're willing to do it, you're gonna give them.
Well, you, you, you're always running your sink, prime time when you're home.
Yeah, I know.
Three to, three to six, first thing you do is you wash your dish, right? Do you take in a shower, you washing your kid's hands, so.
Well, but those who would be willing to agree to it, if they were, give them something, that I'll give you a hundred bucks, or get, I'll give you ten bucks a month off your bill. But you know that's never gonna go on between forty.
Well, I'd be proposing that in a way, right, cause we'll get, you're gonna get a better rate. You're not writing a check to somebody, presumably the bill will be lower and.
Yep.
Once we get the, you know, the AMI meters and you'll be able to see.
Got it, oh, I see, it just, I see, so to tell them to, to figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
And that they'll figure out how to do it, is your point, okay. And if, but, but this would be, this is such the big thing, if you can somehow get people to put the timer in, well, that would be a piece of it, right?
Work together, yeah.
So, so Paul, so the AMI is getting implemented this year, right?
Want to talk about that.
Yeah, I'll be quick, this is the last slide, I think. Uh, just quick, keep on the weather relation program, we have eighty completed this year, eighty in the. Pipeline and the zero interest loan, it's a little more involved process, right now we have three in the pipeline. Um, and then, uh, we had, just had the E B show in August. Uh, we did the whole thing, our marketing team is really great, we organized the whole thing, we invited. We had four dealers there, they brought in eight V E V, uh, E Vs. Uh, we estimate about a hundred fifty people who attended, I actually went there, and, and yeah, there were a lot of people, because we did it, um. Across from the farmer's market in Wilmington. And then immediately after the event, the, the town of Women actually asked us, our marketing, like, can we plan the next year already? So I think it was well received, yeah. Uh, and then coming back to demand response, I wanna kinda update on the customer portal. Customer portal is the place where, um, so we, you know, we have the M D M with our, our data. And the portal draws the data from the M D M, and then when the customer signs up for the portal. They can see their own usage, their own hourly usage, so the chart here is a customer that I know that allowed me to share the data. Um, you can, you can see the, you know, you can clearly see the, the, the peak, you know, that was June twenty-fourth, that's likely to be the capacity peak. Day of this year, and then it was very low in, in the second circle, because that person was on vacation.
They're on vacation, you can tell they're on vacation.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very interesting. Uh, I just wanna kinda show this to kinda connect the dots, where, you know, wanna do demand re- response, we wanna do the, the hourly data. Wanna kinda change behavior, wanna do TOU, all this will be tied together, and we're really, um, uh, um. Promoting the customer portal, because that will be a very cost-effective way for us to do the shadow building, which I kinda explained before.
Who can do the customer portal?
Any customer, you, you can just go on the, go on the website and, uh, register, your own account. Yeah. Okay, I think that's all.
Tech savvy people know about that, they will sign up. Great, thank you, Megan, everything else. Ray. Nepa conference update for us, um, thank you for being willing to share.
Yeah, uh, Nepa Conference, uh, was up in Burlington, Vermont. Um, Maria and I got up there early and we did scuba diving on some wrecks in Lake Champlain, um. It's, uh, dark and muddy, but we're used to that, it being New England divers, and, uh, it was, it was fun. It, it can be very deep, actually, but where we don't, uh, we was only, uh, forty-five feet, so not, not very deep. And it was a lovely weekend, except for the one hour when we were actually on a boat on Lake Champlain, then it rained, and so that was, that was a disappointment. But Pam, Dave and I were, were commissioners in, in, in attendance, um, and this. Staff time and availability and whatever, we didn't have any other representatives from R M L D, although R M L B. Generally well represented at these events, and I hope, uh, will, uh, be going forward, cab members, uh, Vivek and Jason. Um, I don't think anybody else, right, just you two. Uh, Jason received distinguished service award, where he called to the stage. And I think embarrassed greatly for two to three minutes, it was. Very hard, they have to take, uh, take praise, but he was, uh, he was recognized for his service to Dan Bruce. Uh, and deservedly so. Um, program highlights for me, others may, may decide, um, what things were important to them, but. Uh, the talk about load shifts, you, you sort of mentioned it a little bit here, uh, that as we go into further adoption of E Vs and, and heat pumps. Summer peak may move to winter peak and the implications of that in terms of how, where we get power and, and how do we sustain that. Uh, it was a discussion about cyber threats, which was very good, uh, and then a lot about heat pump and heat pump adoption. Uh, some other topics, um. I think are topics that they want us to know about, I don't think they're topics that we want to, we want. We get as much value from if they were shaped with a different perspective, um, but. That's, tho- those were my highlights, um, the Massachusetts, uh, Lake Commissioners Association. Had its meeting, uh, near the lake shed, no one knew where the lake shed was, but indeed I have a photograph with our sign next to the lake shed. It turns out it's a hallway and we stood around for about an hour, twenty-four commissioners, uh, from about sixty-eight M L Ps chatted. About what, uh, our goals and interests were, uh, through the end of this year and into next year. Um, uh, I'm hoping next year we can get chairs, and that will be an awesome improvement for those that, uh, were standing in the hallway. Talking to some people about, of maybe that, so. So, uh, uh, other people that went and comment, uh.
Yeah, no, no, uh, I, I, a big shout out to Ray and to Jean Jacques. For herding cats, and actually he did most of the herding, right, Ray did most of the herding to pull everyone there, so thank you for that. And Paul, the slides for this are available, there were like about six or seven presentations that were. That are posted on the Nepa's site, if you don't have them, I'm happy to share them with you. I, I've downloaded them, I'm happy to share them with you, uh, Next Step provided some information on rates. Uh, there was some stuff on heating, uh, electric heating, uh, and cybersecurity and all that. So I'm happy to, if, if you don't have them, I'm happy to share all of those with you, uh, there was one on S M Rs, nuclear S M Rs. Uh, I, 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 I think the main takeaway for me was that, um. It's good to know that the past winter was mild compared to what we've had in the past, so it's just good to be aware of that. Uh, in case, you know, this year is gonna be a little colder and whatever that means. Uh, I S O New England has a huge battery, amount of battery capacity in the interconnection queue, so. I don't know how that works out, cause I mean, that means there are plans, but I don't know if they work out. And what that means for the resiliency for the grid, uh, so tha- that's something that came out in one of the presentations. And. Yeah, and, and there, there was a presentation by a guy called John Blair, and he talked about pricing. For time of use, the different ways of pricing, so you can look at that presentation and see, so it's like. He, he could be a good resource to talk to, it's, the, the company is called Energy and Environmental.
I think they did at a, another event as well, maybe another thing.
Joined the ranks of general managers again, he was a G M someplace, he left, he was, he was. That's right, he's going marble.
Okay, he's going to Marblehead, but I think he's still, I'm sure he can talk about it.
Sure.
Yeah, so, so that, that's a presentation that Sue was looking at, okay.
Yeah, on that one, um, I thought Pamela would have about it, is that he was pushing seasonal based. Rate structures, which to try to get on top of the winter peak versus summer peak. Um, and I, and I think some of that projection, since the data he would have to draw on it, would have had to have been. You know, a year or two old from now, but then making projections as to what's gonna be in, in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, twenty forty. I guess they're making their best projection, but I think that's still projection, and we need to track to see if those trends follow out, but. You, I felt he was pushing seasonal based pricing too soon, time of use, I think still will be effective.
No, no, I think my, my main takeaway was, we need to have a dynamic mechanism for pricing.
Right, yeah.
And, and just like pricing on anything else, like nowadays people are saying, this is my price, but I'll vary my discount. So I have fixed price, but I'll give you a different discounts, a different, under different conditions, so, so there's different ways to do pricing, right? So, uh, i- it's just that rather than a fixed price, people have to be thinking about dynamic pricing. And, 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 and I just look at that as an example, and, and I look at that as a teaching moment, saying, you know, this is what you wanna do, this is what you get. And to your point, maybe it's not optimal for some people, right?
Thanks, Ray, appreciate that. Um, okay, uh, Paul.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm expecting you know that we put out to bid the. So we, we put out to bid for, uh, the AMI meters, devices themselves. We have a vendor, Tanalus, we put out to bid to have them install. Uh, we worked with a consultant to develop a budget price for that, the budget to install. The twenty-six thousand, and we, we're only going to have the contractor install. All of single-phase residential, but kinda slap them inside, not really, but you know. Yeah. Quick hits that way, uh, twenty-six thousand of those, we budgeted a million, came in two million. So a hundred percent over what our budget was, so million bucks is a pretty big number, so, uh.
What was the difference there, what were the cost drivers, like?
So the biggest difference, and we, I, I, I worked with the guy, um. Peel the onion back pretty far today with the vet, with the consultant that we used and with Nick from our leader department. And it, it revolves around the prevailing wage, basically is what it comes down to. So in Massachusetts, because we are a government entity, we have to pay the u- the union rates.
So did we not know that or assume that in our?
Was my question as well, and. Know that, I, oh, yeah, so anytime we hire somebody to do something, you know, of any, even just on labor type thing, you guys would know this. We have to use the, you know, it's, it's.
But that would be in the bid process.
It should have, would be.
Yeah, you should, it should be clarified in the bid.
When you're doing a bid like that, you have to go up for three different bids, and it has to be stated. Uh, cause you need a bid sheet every single week that has to be submitted to the process.
I think it just needs to be in the scope, when you put a, a bid for any labor, you have to state that it's Massachusetts prevailing wages to be used.
Yes, cause wage changes, and so.
And then usually that get, you request that from the state to provide you, it's very high level, and you give them a bunch of different. Job with types with rates, and you just provide it. Regions and it comes back and everybody uses the same.
Understand that we did the wrong bid process, I understood that we. Let me just finish, what I was saying, I don't think we budgeted the correct way, if we, if we assumed. Well, we, we should, we should just understand if, if that's the case.
Yeah.
That's really the difference, that feels like it's.
I guess I'm going back to, to your point, like, is there like a janitorial rate, is there? Every single level, so we're looking at basically alignment, right, to.
Yeah, licensed electrician or.
Our.
But I don't know, so, I don't.
I don't think the utility stuff is in there, it's gonna be like.
Like a one oh three electrician.
Yeah.
Journeyman electrician, to say.
Come, coming in.
Right, like in Wilmington, we went out to get our cooling towers done. And you have to pay prevailing wage, and I'm calling around looking for different vendors, and the guy says, oh, yeah, I can be there Friday. And he called me Thursday and said, I can't come out, cause you guys need prevailing wage, and we don't pay that.
Think there's like, there's limited exceptions, like it's family-owned business, and it's like a family member, there's like little tiny exceptions to get around it, but not for something this big. Um, it, it probably, it could have been estimated, and maybe then, I, I don't know, maybe the number of hours is different, or the number of workers.
Maybe the vendor didn't supply.
Or if they got a budgetary quote, just to be able to kinda get something in the budget, maybe that was misunderstood.
So at the end of the day, it came in at two million bucks, for whatever reason, it came in at two million, the budget number maybe apparently wasn't good, cause it was a million bucks off. Two million, remember that number, so we, we, Nick and I started talking about, so how are we gonna do this? And if we use.
And if we use inter, and that's what I'm intending to do, use internal help. Thirty thousand meters, six hundred K. Twenty six thousand meters, two million bucks. Sounds like a pretty easy decision to me, right? It's like a three hundred percent.
It's just time.
It's time, so I, I, that was one of the things I asked Nick about, so we were gonna, you know, the, apparently the way the. Proposal went out, they were gonna be done in four months. Nick estimates conservatively that. We'll get it done in about twelve. So there's, you know, a little bit of time, eight months, but again, it's. Uh. Two millions, one point four save, right? Am I doing that math right? That's, that's again, that's a lot of dough.
So, and well, we were talking about the original bid.
They did the budget.
Sometimes we're gonna get up to these meters, they're gonna be.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I, so, so I don't know if that was part of the bid, so. Our, part of our process is, we're gonna have to have an electrician, right? Whether it's an in-house and or. Because when I gotta go replace the meter socket, depending on what you're touching.
Right.
You could own the whole thing, right? I, I, I could own the riser, I could own it to the, to, so that's when we gotta talk to. The wiring inspector in the town is what to he, what will they allow? As well, and I don't know if we got that deep in into that contract into this.
No, I don't, I don't think so, because you don't know how many houses you're gonna come up along into where you could have.
But you, you are gonna have, right, 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 so.
We did it in Hingham a few years ago.
Yeah.
We didn't go to an AMI, AMI, we went to an AMR and I don't, frankly, I don't remember what the percentages were, but. Not huge.
Right, right, we're just, that continued to.
And Hingham might even be a little bit more problematic than, say, this area, because you're a lot closer to the ocean, why? So you got those. Salt air corroding, you know, the metal, metal meter sockets.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's just, you're in, there's no room, right? The, the socket goes in a route or you're replacing the meter socket. And if I'm replacing the meter socket, I'm replacing. Um, uh, you know, up to the weatherhead or.
Depending on what the problem is, you know, anytime that there's a problem. The solution to it could be partially on the customer, it could be partially on.
Yeah, that, that, that's the other component of it. What are we, what are we gonna take ownership for? In that, cause we're the one changing the meter socket, you know, the customer's responsible, right? It's their meter socket. Where, where are we gonna go? You know, because we're driving this to be changed and if it is deteriorated. You know, handing someone a bill, oh, I'm changing your meter, by the way, here's a four thousand dollar bill that you have to pick up, right?
Tell the customer, your meter socket's in trouble, we're not gonna touch that meter right now, but you gotta get that thing fixed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there, there's other, yeah.
Cause I mean, that's the, cause we don't want, I mean frankly, I don't wanna be putting my hands on a customer problem, cause then I'll.
You won't.
Exactly, so, so the guys who are gonna be out doing this work, this is what we do all, all the time. So when they come up to a meter socket that looks like it could be problematic.
Is that what the vendor was gonna do too? Like with, with this price, or are they gonna accept? What were the exclusions for what they weren't gonna do?
So I, I didn't read it. I cannot imagine that a customer, a contractor, who's gonna bring people in from who knows where. Is gonna accept responsibility for a dog meter socket in writing, you know what I mean? They just, they will run from it faster than we would run from it.
Right, cause I mean, if you do the math, it's eighty bucks a meter, which doesn't sound like a lot if they were doing them all, right? I mean, I think it's a two million is around eighty, eighty dollars.
Seventy six dollars and eighty six.
Yeah, I mean, and so that doesn't sound like a lot if they're really doing all of them, but if, yeah, if they're walking away from a third of them or a half of them, because of.
So they, their number was, as you say, say eighty bucks. Nick was figuring that ours would be more on the order of like sixty. So over thirty thousand meters. That's, we're talking real money.
Yeah.
Right.
So is there more analysis that's gonna be done? Is that, are you making a recommendation?
So we, so my, I, I believe that it's my decision. And we are gonna use our employees to do that. And the justification, if you will, is. That huge cost savings, like one point four M.
So what's the, when will it start and what's the?
So we have to get the, before we can start, we have to get the interface. So there's, it's kind of a two part thing, right? We have to make sure that we have a communication network that is going to allow for that. So until we get that, until we get that squared away and tested, we're not gonna start slapping meters, like, because we started putting these new meters in. We're not gonna have a billion reading. So we, 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 we just, we're having that conversation today about, we are not there yet with the um.
The building.
With the communication piece and billing.
That's, seems like a good decision.
It seems like a pretty easy one to make.
What do I know, but.
It would, I think, yeah, that, I mean, certainly, from a dollar's perspective, that makes sense.
Right.
Uh, yeah, just maybe, maybe next time we can just have an update on, based on all of the. Like what, what's the timeline look like? Cause then I think we start with what is the communication.
These people. Oh, clearly, yeah, so we're gonna have, you know, campaigns to let the customers know that.
I just don't know if that's. Months, or is it starting in six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, that depends on when the integration will happen. Uh, right now, the billing system is, we're just still waiting on that piece. There are a lot of pieces to it. I, I don't know if, at some point we can provide an update, but right now it's just.
At least monthly, I'll, I'll be updating.
And the packet, all of our programs with a meter.
With a meter. Oh, we did. Yeah, we literally talked about that, so. Now, if our employees are gonna install the meters, we're literally gonna have them have that packet. Like put on their door. We installed a new meter for you. Here is the information about A, B, C, and D.
Yeah.
I will save uh, that'll save me twenty, twenty two thousand dollars a, a month for mailing the stamps.
Oh, so it's the same material that you'll send, they send anyway, but without.
Lot of glue to it.
Oh, yes.
Alright.
So that, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, uh, nothing else, um, from an IGM update perspective, okay?
Oh, the only, well, that annoying question I asked you.
Oh, right, so David, at the, at the, before the meeting started, asked me if I had thought about the. Small adjustment to the uh, I'll use the word contract and I had thought about it and I'm not interested in changing. The agreement.
Okay, and and this was that, as a result of legal advice or just?
So David, we had, we used lawyers to hobble this agreement together.
Yep.
If we wanna open up the agreement, we can open up the agreement, but. There were set, two sets of signatures on that and I'm not interested in opening that up.
Fair.
To add that language.
Yeah, that's fair. I just didn't know if somebody said, no, this isn't a good idea for you to do because of the, what the content was, but. Yeah.
Okay. Um, so let's move on to scheduling then. Uh, I think we had, Erica, was there. Going to be a change in the November?
Yeah, so we, we can talk about this offline, but.
Okay.
Just looking at the poll that I sent out. It seems like we maybe can make one change, but kind of how it's looking is that Rich can't do Wednesdays and, sorry, which can't, yeah. Rich can't do Wednesdays, Bob can't do Thursdays, so I think there was one Tuesday we could do. Um, it's really, pretty much everyone couldn't do. One of the days, I guess, so it's maybe we talk offline about. Um, but there is one thing, we do need to schedule a quick meeting next week, um, any day but Monday for Peter. For us to, um, for you all to approve the, one of the bids for the substation and then Peter can also give you like a little update on where that is before. You approve it, um, so.
We do that remotely?
Yes, that will be all, um, quick meeting, all remote. Pretty much anytime. Works for us. Um, just whatever works for you all. If you wanna do an evening, we can do that. If you wanna do a morning, we can do that. We could even do, no, sorry, Paul, don't.
Next week, Monday.
So really the only night I could do is Wednesday.
I'm gonna be, you can't know next week.
Okay.
It's four bids.
Specifically, we just need.
It's a bit, actually, you don't need the cap.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We just need three, so the, to approve the bed, really from the board.
It's, I'm, I'm away as well, but if you just, there's something else and I can jump on. And if it's just, you think it's just gonna be like a five minute meeting, yeah, just.
Yeah, we'll send, they already did the bid letter, so I'll send you the bit stuff like tomorrow morning and then.
We get the bit stuff ahead of time, that would be helpful, probably look at any questions, but, okay.
So Wednesday.
Wednesday is fine with me.
Six, five?
Uh, we could do five, that would be better for me.
Uh, well, if, are you in? If you don't need me, then that's fine.
Yeah.
You gotta, she'd get three out of five.
Five o'clock Wednesday, it's okay.
Yeah, five o'clock.
Five o'clock Wednesday, all remote, and I will send that out. Thank you.
Maybe potential executive session for an update on the, um. Zoom, we're on the, on the GM search.
Okay.
And the um, contract update.
Sure, on the same meeting.
On the same meeting, you have so in a, the two item executives.
Oh, that. This is for next Wednesday?
This would be another timeframe. I can't, I can't, I could not do that next week, probably the fall of the week.
Yes, I agree with you, like another, another, something to update the dual traps and.
Yeah.
Then Rich will be calling meeting and we can maybe suggest something.
So that would be the week of, like in September.
Three weeks or something.
Two, preferably two.
Two, okay.
Would you wanna go, just thinking, add a meeting on to one of your search committee meetings? Or would you wanna?
It would. Um, I think it would be a whole, a whole separate meeting because it's the, it's not the subcommittee.
Just something like, if you did a five o'clock subcommittee, like right after, you could do a regular, like six or seven. Do you two wanna see me?
Yeah. We could do something like that. Yeah, we, we, we were doing Wednesdays at noon, but maybe, uh. Um, so you, you, you were just saying next week, the twenty fourth, October first, but I don't know if that works. Good for Rich.
Are you still in the car?
Yeah, I think October first is okay.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, October first is okay for me.
Okay.
As is the twenty fourth.
Okay.
Okay. I, I could be in transit, um. But. See. Yeah, okay, um.
On first.
Coming back from Chicago.
The nine twenty four bid.
Oh, yeah, cause we talked a little too, so, um, that could be virtual, whether it was more convenient. Um. Uh, maybe the option both, but what would, you know, six o'clock?
So six o'clock, ten one, that will be, um, two committees updating the board on happening and executive.
Yes, please.
And then nine twenty four bid, approval, all remote. And then I'll circle back with you, Pamela, when the board meetings.
Okay. Um. Um. Sorry, October first, we said also virtual? That can be extended or?
It could be either or.
Okay. Okay, um. Alright, uh, and so I think that's it for the agenda. We're gonna move to executive session, uh, with the tablet to move. Just motion.
Yeah.
Move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under the purpose number six. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property relative to two thirty two Ash Street. In Redding, Mass, and under purpose number three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the local IB EW one oh three union. And return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
For us too?
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exempt from public meeting records and open meeting requirements in certain instances under purpose number six. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease or uh value of real property relative to two. Thirty two Ash Street in Redding, Massachusetts, and under purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. For, uh, with, for the local IB EW one oh three unit and return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Those in favor?
Um. Ronson, yes.
Salute us.
Report, I.
Hold, right.
Alright, okay, thank you. We'll see you in executive.